Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, November 2nd, 2017. Councilman Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, you'll bow with me.
Lord, we thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Lord, we especially thank you this week for peace in our community and for our law enforcement officers, and we're just so glad that you are with us, and we need you here with us tonight as well, just like we do every night that we meet, and we hope that you will guide our decisions. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Before we get into ceremonial items, I want to publicly just say, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the community about this past Saturday, and, you know, when all of the talk started, we, one of the things that we had said is that we felt like that Murfreesboro had the opportunity to be the example, not only in our, our region, but our country, on how we handled things like what we were dealing with. And I can tell you, I have never been more proud of this city and Rutherford County than I am and have was on Saturday. And for the residents who are watching, and y'all who are in the audience, if you knew how dedicated the men and women who protect you on a daily basis are, I can tell you, I sleep better at night now, seeing and knowing what I saw on Saturday. We were protected, I think, by more than just men and women in our community, but their dedication doesn't go unnoticed. So all those who participated in this Saturday, the over 27 law enforcement agencies that are, were involved in our locality, our state, our federal government, the over 500 people who were working, we want to say thank you, and that we owe you our gratitude. Also, to the residents of Murfreesboro and for Rutherford County, we want to say thank you for how you handled yourself, that we were able to show what this community is about, that we're a diverse community, that we're a unified community, and that we are together in Murfreesboro. So, felt like I needed to say that. I am extremely proud of, of our community. All right, next, we have a special census going on, and you may ask how that affects you. The more people that we can account who are in the city of Murfreesboro, that helps keep your, keeps your taxes low. So we want to make sure, if you get the pamphlet or the booklet that's in the mail, don't throw that away. We want you to be able, you can do it online, you can fill it out and send it in, but we want to make sure everyone in the community is counted. We did our last census in 2012, we were 110,000, is that right, Rob?
No, it was in the late 2000s was our last special.
The last special census, but we did, our last one was 110,000 is our, was our count, our federal census, and we think we're a lot closer to 130,000, 540,000 residents now. So that's a lot of shared state funds that we want to, we want to work through. So please fill that out.
Mayor, I, I think they said if, if it's up 20,000 individuals in Murfreesboro from the last census, that that would equate to $2.8 million annually. So it, it's, it's a significant amount of money that we're talking about the city receiving, and you referred to the importance of keeping our taxes low. This is one opportunity that just by filling out a piece of paper, you have the opportunity to do that. So encourage everybody to do it, just like the mayor.
All right, we have three ceremonial items. I have two proclamations, and then Mr. Tucker is here tonight to give us our monthly history lesson. It's my privilege tonight to be able to introduce someone to you, a graduate of MTSU. LaShan, if you'd come up. This is the second person who's been here in less than a month that's wearing a crown. So, you may need to take, take that off because you're tall, no, I'm just kidding, you're taller than me. All right, I have a proclamation. Whereas Ms. LaShan Matthews Dixon, a graduate of Middle Tennessee State University, received her Bachelor's of Science in Exercise Science, Graduate Certificate in Healthcare Management, Graduate Certificate in Gerontology, and her Master's of Science in Health. Ms. Dixon is a native of Nashville and currently lives in Murfreesboro with her husband Lamar and daughter London. Lamar also serves on the Friends of the Greenway Commission here in, in the city. Whereas Ms. Dixon has held many crowns, including Ms. Black in Gold, Ms. Middle Tennessee Blue Raider, Ms. Black Tennessee USA, Ms. Tennessee Pearl, Ms. Spirit of the South, and is the reigning national, Ms. Unite, and Ms. Tennessee United States, and placed first runner-up to Ms. United States 2017 this past July. And whereas Ms. Dixon is very passionate about serving minorities and those with disparities, and has made her platform Beauty Behind Bars, which encourages overall self-esteem and was created to help women and girls break away from mental incarceration and self-imprisonment from low self-esteem down, depression, suicide, and unfulfilled potential. Beauty Behind Bars teaches forgiveness, accountability, and the importance of loving self from the inside out. And whereas Ms. Dixon works as the Assistant County Director for the Rutherford County Health Department, and as an adjunct professor at Middle Tennessee State University, and for the past seven years, has designed and conducted research studies to determine community health education needs, and planned and instructed health education programs based on those needs. And whereas LaShan Dixon also serves as liaison for the Rutherford County Health Department for Smart Moms, Smart Mothers Are Resisting Tobacco, an award-winning prenatal tobacco cessation program which was implemented by, implemented by Middle Tennessee State University's Center for Health and Human Services. The Smart Moms Program was identified in 2013 as a Rising Star Program by the Tennessee Department of Health. And whereas Ms. Dixon stays very active in a number of service organizations in our community, Ms. Dixon is a member of First Baptist Church Murfreesboro where she is active in the dance ministry. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2017, as a date and it recognize Ms. LaShan Dixon. Well, Shan, I would tell you to recognize everyone you've got here, but you've got a, you've got a crowd here tonight. I can't say this is probably one of the largest crowds that we've had for a proclamation, so, thank y'all for coming. Chris, you want to come up? You know, we talked about this Saturday and what makes the city special, and really what makes the city of Murfreesboro a great place to live is the people who work for the city. And we have a very talented group who, who represent the residents every single day. You know, we get a lot of the credit for what we do here, but the hard work is done behind the scenes with, with many different people. Chris is, is our Director of IT. Chris has been very busy today.
Yes.
Thanks to our sign coordinator, Ms. Amelia Kerr, right?
Yes.
So Chris has been dealing with some viruses that are out throughout the city, so, thank you, Amelia. Amelia, you need to be careful what you click on. Where is she? Just kidding, Amelia.
Sort of.
I'll never get a sign approved again in the city, so. All right, Chris was, was recognized here recently, and let me read this to you. And I promised that, Chris, I wouldn't tell a basketball story. I'm officially 2-0 in two years playing against Chris's teams, but I promise I wouldn't say that. So, Chris, I didn't say that. Chris Lilly was raised in Murfreesboro and obtained a Bachelor's Degree from Trebekah University. Chris and his wife Navondo are the parents of five children, Latisha Bradford, Jasmine Lilly, Chris Lilly II, Chandler Lilly, and Chase Lilly. And whereas Chris Lilly was named the city's first Information Technology Director in 2012, and successfully integrated technology and geographic information systems employees into a single unified team from multiple departments. And whereas Chris led the adoption of the city's first information technology master plan, which resulted in increased efficiencies and effectiveness in the area of finance, human resources, communications, and public safety. And whereas Alpha Phi Alpha hosted its 97th District Conference at the Embassy Suites in Murfreesboro, and Chris was part of the committee formed to plan and host the district conference, and was the leader of the public program. Chris created a skit called "A Tribute to the Letter at the Birmingham Jail" to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Dr. King's death. And whereas Chris coordinated a community service event during the conference where several members of Alpha Phi Alpha went to We Care Daycare Center to read to students during the public program. It was proclaimed that October 27th, 2017, would be known as Chris Lilly Day by the mayor and vice mayor. Chris was named the Chapter Brother of the Year, and the Murfreesboro Chapter was also awarded District Chapter of the Year. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 27th, 2017, as a day to honor Chris Lilly.
It has been a day, a day full of fighting viruses, and it wasn't just Amelia. Yeah, you can know that. But, in other words, you know, I appreciate what the city's done for me. I appreciate the support I've received from, from my boss, Rob Lyons, and, and from this council. I couldn't have done what I've done so far without all of you. Thank you.
Awesome, Chris. Thank you, brother.
And now, last but not least, we'll invite our county historian Greg Tucker to come up and give us our history lesson of the month.
Let me begin by echoing our mayor's sentiments about last weekend. Last weekend's now part of our local history, and I'm very pleased that it's part of our history we can be proud of. Also, minor historic event for my family, for the first time ever, my wife is attending a city council meeting. And I appreciate she's finally agreed to come along. Last month, the city of Murfreesboro passed a significant milestone, and I want to offer some historic perspective on that. And I've asked Councilman Shacklet to help me because this will involve some mathematics, and I know he's good with large numbers, so.
Oh, yeah.
In about 1910, the, one of the local chapters of the Daughters of the American Revolution anticipated that the Murfreesboro was approaching a centennial. And if you know the Daughters of the American Revolution, they're very precise, and they want to be very accurate. So, in anticipation of that time, they went to the state archivist, Mr. Robert Quarles, and asked him to pinpoint for them the exact day and time, year, that Murfreesboro was founded. And he went into the records and reported back to them that Murfreesboro was founded on June 12th, 1812. And of course, they wanted to know his logic, and he said Murfreesboro did not exist until a survey was done, and they were able to say, literally put the stake in the ground and say, "This is Murfreesboro, this is where Murfreesboro is." So he gave them the date, June 12th, 1812. Thereafter, they began planning an appropriate celebration, recognition, acknowledgement of that 100th anniversary. Unfortunately, a distinguished citizen, Judge Palmer, died two days before their celebration, and the funeral was scheduled for the same day, and so the observation of our centennial was rather subdued. That was 1912. Now, Councilman Bill, if you will add 25 years to 1912 and tell us the date?
1912 and 25, 1937.
1937. Nothing happened in 1937. There was no celebration. But, in 1938, Minor Bragg, the publisher of the Rutherford Courier, one of our leading newspapers in that period, announced that in 1938, it would be the 125th, despite your math, the 125th anniversary of Murfreesboro was 1938. He explained, "Murfreesboro did not exist until the private property which became Murfreesboro was transferred to the town commissioners and became public property." And that, according to the deed records, and the transfer didn't happen, of course, until the deed was officially filed and registered. That occurred on March 2nd, 1813. So according to Mr. Bragg, the grandfather of one of our former mayors, the 125th anniversary of Murfreesboro was March 2nd, 1813. All right, Councilman Bill, will you add 25 to 1938?
1938 and 25 is 63.
1963, you said? Okay. Nothing happened in 1963. There was no celebration, although that would seem to be 150 years. Well, what happened was, one of my predecessors, a distinguished educator, Homer Pittard, did his research and advised the city that its 150th anniversary would be specifically October 15, 18, excuse me, 1917. The reason being, in his interpretation, Murfreesboro did not exist as a city until the legislature issued a city charter, making it an incorporated city. So up to that time, it was, I guess, a cluster of buildings around the courthouse, but it was not a city. So in 1967, I can remember 1967, there was a big celebration. There were parades, there was a theatrical performance scripted by Homer Pittard, there were speeches by all the leaders, there was a big banquet, and the high school band performed, and Critchlow Elementary School Band performed, and that was our 150th anniversary, 1967. All right, Bill, once more, add 50 to 1967.
50 to 67 is 2017.
2017? Happy birthday. 200th anniversary of the chartering of the city of Murfreesboro was actually October 15th of last month, 200 years. A lesson from this, I have to give you a lesson, history, like a lot of things, depends on definition, and you can see the different definitions there that were used. Now, some of you may remember that about six years ago, a former administration declared that 2011 was the 200th anniversary. That was just wrong.
That's great.
I've got to tell y'all the, the story. Mr. Tucker came to me and said, "Hey, we're going to celebrate the 200th anniversary." And I said, "Well, no, we celebrated that six years ago." So he went through this whole story, which I've tried to follow again, and still am confused, but I went to Main Street and I said, "Hey, we need to celebrate our 200th anniversary." And they said, "No, we celebrated that six years ago." So, we confused everybody.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. You know, I think this is your sixth or seventh month that you've done that, done this for us, and I have learned something new about the city every time that you've come up, and they've all been informative and humorous, but we really thank you for doing this. You know, I joke with people when I speak with them, that I'll raise the hands and say, "Who's from Murfreesboro?" And normally, it's 10%, less than 10% are from Murfreesboro. So we all joke, and we'll say, "You 10% can fuss about all the growth, the other 90% you can't fuss about because you're like me, you're not from here." So it's good to be able to let people know our history, so we appreciate you doing that.
As long as I'm welcome, I'll keep coming.
And I know everyone's here for a proclamation. We would love y'all to stay for the entire city meeting, but y'all don't have to, so you feel free to get up anytime y'all want to. But Dan, if you want to take London back home, y'all are welcome to, to stay, or y'all are welcome to, to take off. It's totally up to you guys. You're not going to hurt our feelings. Chris, you get to stay, brother. Thank y'all. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. You have several items. You also have a revised letter that's laid out on item I, that will be included in the consent agenda.
There's no questions with the amendment to I? No approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You've got three meetings worth of minutes. October 12th, the special meeting, October 18th, the special meeting on compensation, and October 20th, the special meeting on the CIP plan. Any additions or relations to the minutes? Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings. We have a letter from the City Recorder, Finance Director, regarding amendment to Exhibit A of Ordinance 17052.
We had already passed the budget amendment on first reading, and later y'all approved the purchase of the wetland area around Oakland, and so we added this on to that exhibit. That's the only change, is to add that on. Well, I take that back. That and the special census. We, we realize that process is going to take a little more funding than we originally budgeted, so we added those two things on to make sure that we are covered for that.
All right, we'll consider for passage on second and final reading as amended, Ordinance 17052, amending the 2017, 2018 budget, the First Amendment.
So moved.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Moving to new business, pursuant to Resolution 17R PH47 adopted by-
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We, we had to amend it and then pass it as amended.
Okay.
We need two votes.
All right, so we need a motion for the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now moving to new business, pursuant to Resolution 17R PH47 adopted by the city council on September 28th, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 31.3 acres along Medical Center Parkway as planned signage overlay PSO District, Hearthstone Properties applicant 2017 414. Notice to said public hearing was published on October 16th, 2017 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of council. In 2006, the planning department amended a zoning ordinance to allow planned sign overlay districts to accommodate developments with 20 acres or more, be allowed increased signage above what is allowed in the city's sign ordinance. Signage allocation for large developments are more complex than what is typical, and there are certain elements that are not allowed or that may not be addressed in the city's sign ordinance, which may be approved with a PSO. Since that zoning amendment, there have been four PSOs approved by planning commission and council. Those include the Avenue, St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital, Stones River Mall, and Amazon. With the PSO, applicants waive their rights to variances or appeals to any signage to the Boarding of Zoning Appeals, and any revisions or updates not deemed to be minor deviations must be approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. The PSO becomes that development's sign ordinance, and it is regulated by the development and city staff. The Fountains of Gateway located at 1500 Medical Center Parkway is zoned MU with a 3D, GDO3 overlay. The development consists of approximately 32 acres, 12 of which have been purchased by the Fountains, and approximately 20 acres which are under option to the Fountains. The development consists of office space, retail, restaurants, and outdoor entertainment area, including a lawn and ice rink, and a performance stage, and a portable theater screen, and will also possibly have a hotel. Due to the diversity of uses and building types within the development, it was determined that the PSO was desired for optimal and innovative signage and lighting. Because this property lies within the GDO zone, it was also reviewed by the Design Review Committee that oversees elements within the developments in that area, and was approved on June 28th, 2017. There are few differences between the PSO and the city's sign ordinance which have been outlined, and I have included in the agenda packet. I would like to point out that there is a typo on the outline under development signage for temporary project signs. It says that they could be 48 square foot. That is actually 32 square foot, which is the same throughout the city on temporary signs. The council needs to conduct a public hearing, and at this time, Tyler Thayer, representing the Hearthstone Group, will review the PSO elements which are above what would be allowed by the city's sign ordinance, and then he and I, he or I, either one will be available to answer questions.
Thank you, Amelia. Can I get, I was asked to turn on the overhead. I will walk you through this. Let's see if it comes up here. Perfect. Once again, my name is Tyler Thayer. I am Director of Development with Hearthstone Properties, and we're developing the Fountains at Gateway, and good evening. I'll run through real quick the primary, the highlights of what we are requesting to be changed here for you, and on page 14, did you guys all have the packet? Are you just looking on the digital? Great. Page 14, this begins to outline the master site signage locations and the entire development for you, to be able to understand that, the, just the kind of the master overlay, the blue dots representing light poles with double pendants on them, the red lines representing string lights, there's some orange dots that represent the freestanding canopies, which I'll talk about here in a second, the complex IDs, which would be what you might consider a monument sign, small development IDs welcoming, we are proposing two future connections to the other developments, so welcome signage, and then freestanding multi-tenant building ID signs which are to be located outside of certain select buildings, especially office tenants, to give them an opportunity to have a smaller sign outside of the entrance. On page 15, I'd like to talk a little bit about the development ID signs. Fountains at Gateway, this is the primary sign out front, it is, the, the structure itself was building permitted. The Fountains at Gateway is larger total than what would temporarily be allowed in the city at large, and so that is kind of an illustration of what that is in the total square footage. I think it's 193, can't barely read it on this one, but the, and then also, I'd like to point out that, and I'll get to a little bit more, the entire campus utilizes RGB lighting, which is color-changing lighting, and so the blue dash line along the top of the Fountains at the waterfall edge is RGB lighting meant to spill over, or the waterfall to spill over it and color the waterfall. The complex ID signage is outlined here as a particular monument sign up on a base, like is the rest in the GDO district, but then a specific, this is on page 18, a, the primary, and this will be primarily used for retail tenants, probably the hotel, those kind of entities, the office tenants, and will not be able to use this unless there's a special circumstance, but primarily for retail, especially those that are internal to the site. And we have requested up to, although there's only one currently planned, but up to three positions on the site, flanking the easternmost entry, which is the secondary primary entry up top, and then you got, I guess you got, it's the primary entry, but then you have the main entry, which actually holds a little less carload on the center, and then all the way down at the most west side, which is the bottom of that page, one there is a possible future option as well that we are requesting. On page 19, this outlines the small development ID, so welcome to the Fountains at Gateway at the two future connection points, and then also a very similar four-by-three-foot approximate sign for a multi-tenant building or a building ID sign, so this might be used by a hotel or within several tenants within a building. Also, on that, on that page would, is the building entry signage, which we are requesting that would not fall within the standard ordinance above the entry for the office, the office buildings, and especially if a tenant was to take an entire office building, that they could use that as an option, and then also if a tenant takes 66% or more of the office space, they could have a building ID sign at the top. could have a building ID sign at the top, so if AT&amp;T or someone like that came, they could name it. The page 21 highlights the double pendant sign, so we have these light poles throughout the entire kind of boulevard, primary plaza, and we are requesting that pennants be allowed to be hung on these. They're dual arms, so for two pendants on each side. These would be limited to Fountains Development pennants, holiday flags, or special development events, which do not include retail. If a retailer is hosting a sale, it would not be for that. This is really for development-oriented pennants or holiday-oriented flags. On page 22, this kind of shows you where all these pedestrian scale lights are, which is on the primary boulevard, and that's where we are proposing to hang these, which is on the pedestrian scale lights, so not the very tall lights in a parking lot, but the smaller ones that are outlining that, the 20-foot sidewalks that we have. Page 23 outlines the string lighting locations and the requests for where we'd like to place these, primarily in between the buildings, also though, potentially over the plaza there in the middle, which is on the primary boulevard. And finally, the fun stuff. We have Plaza Projection Screen, so the plaza has trusses that are encased in a kind of a white shroud. This projection screen is at the furthest interior point of the plaza in that main boulevard. It is to host a 30-foot wide screen size. It is visible from Medical Center Parkway. We have limited it to live, I think we kind of listed a few things in here, but basically live TV, you know, Predator's Game, or MTSU, or anything kind of a game, live streaming there. Also, we hope to host during the summer months, a, in partnership with the city, Movies Under the Stars kind of event, and so we would open up the plaza, let people come in with their chairs and all those kind of things, and watch a movie on that screen. In addition, all these trusses and all the lights on here are RGB, so all those blue lines and the blue little triangles represent an RGB light fixture that can color change, and that, so primarily, they would be blue on here. Scott Gravy's favorite color for the Fountains, if you haven't seen it. The plaza, this is a plan on page 25, a plan, and then a section running through that plaza where we plan to host all these RGB lights that you kind of see that are in here. It also talks about the splash pad, which have RGB lights in it that illuminate the water streams. It has the ice rink located for you where we plan to host that, and the lights would shine down on that. It also discusses that we would like to put Christmas lights on the trees on campus. List the time from November through February, those timelines for those Christmas tree lights. It also discusses the regulations on these RGB lights, such that, for example, that we would not be flashing and changing these lights, but that there is a time limit before they can change throughout the day, so I think it's 60 minutes. It's a little blurry, but somewhere in here, I think it talks about 60 minutes as often as we can change it, except for an event. We are plugged into what's called a DMX event, so if we had a big, large event out there, we could, they could use it as part of the light shows. And then finally, on page 26, 27, and 28, this outlines the current three buildings, two already constructed, and a third one about to be submitted to be constructed, and the lighting schemes on those. The blue triangular lights represent, or dash light represents, once again, the RGB, the green light throws represent a solid white light. And so that should be the end of the primary changes. Most of the rest of it is some, is pretty in line with the city ordinance. I know I went through those kind of quickly, but you guys have a long agenda, so is there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. Ms. Kurt, do we have anything? Okay. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. Our public hearing rules, if you have any comments, you want to come to the podium, you'll direct all your comments to the council. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing just an individual, you'll have three minutes. You'll want to state your name and also your address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance 14OZ47, the zoning area along Medical Center Parkway is planned signage overlay PSO District.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17R PH 48 adopted by the City Council on September 28, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 4.8 acres along Burnt Knob Road and Veterans Parkway from Single Family Residential 15 RS 15 District to Commercial Highway CH District, Prashant Patel applicant 2017-426. Notice that said public hearing was published on October 16, 2017, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next public hearing is for properties, more property that's actually very close to the proposed West Park facility. This requested area is on the southeast corner of Burnt Knob Road and Veterans Parkway. You'll recall that earlier this year, we considered property for rezoning just to the south of this property. It was the Horden McCullough tract that was requested to be rezoned from RS 15, which was its interim zoning classification when it was annexed back in the springtime to CH, Commercial Highway. The West Park property, of course, was annexed and it's Zone P, and this, the impact of the West Park, we feel is going to generate a lot of interest for commercial development at this interchange. So the property owners of this particular 4.8 acre tract, also, we identified as a good candidate for annexation back when the West Park was annexed. We annexed it, and now they have come forward with a zoning request to CH. It's currently zoned RS 15. You recall with the Horden McCullough tract, there were concerns about the types of uses that might be allowed right next to the West Park property. Staff made the applicants of this rezoning request aware of the council's concerns, and we gave them a copy of the restrictive covenants that were, that were recorded for the Horden property to the south, and included in your agenda materials is a draft of the restrictive covenants that Mr. Patel and his ownership group intend to record for this property. It largely mirrors the restrictive covenants that were recorded for the Horden property to the south, although there are several uses that, that Mr. Patel and his co-owners have elected to take off that list. But that is in there for your, for your review. The property was considered by the Planning Commission in September for rezoning to Commercial Highway, and the Planning Commission is unanimously recommending the approval of this request. The owners will have those restrictive covenants recorded prior to second reading if the City Council votes favorably on first reading tonight. I will mention that the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends this property develop as business park. As we've discussed in several instances before, that land use plan was drafted before the West Park was envisioned for that location, and we feel that the, that the vision for that area has changed, and it appears that, that through previous votes on zoning in that area, that, that the direction that, that council is looking for that area is not necessarily reflected in the business park classification. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I believe Mr. Patel is in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Can you just tell us which ones they put back in?
I believe they have, they elected not to exclude liquor store and beer and tobacco I don't recall if there were any others, but most, if not all, the other uses that were on the list are included on these.
Was that list available to the Planning Commission when they looked at this, or is this something that kind of happened after that, since they haven't?
This was something that after, after the Hordes recorded their list, we gave them a copy of, of the Hordes restrictive covenants, so they could use that to, as somewhat of a template.
That's a pretty significant modification, considering it's adjacent to that park property.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. Anyone on this zoning request, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Hi. My name is Bruce Sloan, 5359 Candy Cane Court, and I got this rezoning notice because of this property being within 250 feet of my house, which, or my property, which is right underneath the NE on Candy Cane Court on that map. I was just curious as to what kind of businesses going into that area. There's two residences right there where Veterans Parkway dead ends at Burnt Knob Road, and as far as, you know, what's across on the other side of the road there, I was just curious about what kind of businesses might be going in there if it's 250 feet away from my property.
Okay, we'll get that answered at the end of the public hearing. Could you tell me your name one more, one more time again for the...
Sloan.
Mr. Sloan Wright? Okay. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, can you really talk about the different types of businesses?
If I may, Mayor McFarland, just to, just to clarify, the, the map, it's kind of confusing, and I actually got some calls about this. What we do when we, when we have an annexation, the zoning ordinance actually says that the zoning boundaries go to the, they include the right-of-way. So the property is here, but in the official zoning map, we also include the right-of-way, which I'm outlining the center line of the right-of-way of Veterans Parkway and Burnt Knob Road. So the property is actually, if Mr. Sloan's property is here, under the NE in Candy Cane, the outline of the property is actually here. His property was actually within 250 feet of the right-of-way. That would be included in the annexation, but development can actually occur on the right-of-way. It's just for mapping purposes. As far as the uses that would be allowed in the Commercial Highway zone, Commercial Highway is our, is our most intense commercial zoning district. It does allow things that wouldn't be allowed in commercial fringe, such as automotive repair, automotive sales, hotels, motels. A lot of the uses that might be found objectionable in the Commercial Highway zone, he is proposing to restrict out of the property, and I'll, and I'll read the, the uses that he's proposing to restrict. Automobile sales, except new car dealerships and nationally recognized used car dealerships, boarding houses, group shelters, fraternity or sorority houses, adult entertainment establishments, antique malls, campgrounds, travel trailer parks, carnivals, drive-in theaters, fireworks displays, fireworks retailers, pawn shops, radio and television transmission towers, salvage and surplus merchandise sales and/or storage, sheet metal shops, auto body or collision repair shops, wrecker service storage yards, outdoor contractor storage yards, bus terminals or service facilities, taxi cab dispatch stations, truck or motor freight terminals and service facilities, recycling centers, major warehousing and distribution, truck stops, manufacturer storage and distribution of products including automotive components, boats, wood, plastic metal and machinery, and taverns, tavern being what we would normally consider a bar.
Amen.
That's the list of uses that he's proposing to restrict.
Sorry, Mr. Blomley. Why, why, why are we taking the, the right-of-way over to the west, where it looks kind of more like a T or whatever? Does the property go that way at all?
No, no, the, the property that's being considered for rezoning is really just where that X is, right there. The right-of-way is included because our zoning ordinance tells us that the, that for mapping purposes, the right-of-way is included in the, in the zoning request.
Right away adjacent to the...
Yeah, the right, the right-of-way that's adjacent to the property that's being requested.
Okay, I guess I'm just curious, why is it going out Burnt Knob Road if that's not really adjacent to...
Because we annexed the, the right-of-way of Burnt Knob Road past that intersection.
That spot.
Yeah, and it's the closest, so it's purely for mapping purposes. I apologize for the confusion on that.
Got it.
And the property that we, the Horden property, where is that?
The Horden property is to the south, so it's on both sides of Veterans Parkway...
Candy Crush.
Um...
Delicious.
Okay.
So the Horden, the Horden property is due south to the property that we're considering tonight. There's one additional residential parcel that was annexed in with the, with the West Park annexation, and that property, the owner is not ready to come in for rezoning right now.
So it remains RS 15?
It would remain RS 15. That's correct.
Sorry, I was caught up in the Candy Crush. The, the current property that we're talking about, is it RS 15 as well?
The, the current property?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It was, it was annexed in with an interim zoning classification of RS 15.
All right. All right, I'll just, I'm not comfortable leaving the, leaving those out, so that's it.
And Mr. Patel is here, if you, if, if you would like him to speak to any of that.
I don't need...
Well, the same concerns that we had for the property south, I think we have the same concerns, because it's, even though it's not adjacent to the park, it is close enough to the park to where we'd be concerned about the usages that are allowed there, so I, I agree with Rick, that with, don't exclude the, same exclusion should be for this property.
I'll move, we deny the request.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17R PH 49 adopted by the City Council on September 28, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 8.33 acres along Esquire Drive in Mary Beth Court from Single Family Residential 10 RS 10 District to Single Family Residential 6 RS 6 District, and to rezone approximately 9.24 acres from Single Family Residential 10 RS 10 District to Single Family Residential 12 RS 12 District Camp Properties LLC. The applicant notices said public hearing was published on October 16, 2017, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We reviewed this property last year for annexation and zoning. It came in with the southern half of the property, which is adjacent to Osborne Lane, being zoned RS 12, and the northern half being zoned RS 10. Since that time, Mr. Taylor with SEC and his design team have identified some wetlands on the property that's going to severely constrain the development of the property. So they have requested the rezoning of the blue area to RS 6, because in the time where they were doing their studies, we developed the RS 6 zoning district, and that would allow them to gain some of the number of lots back that they're losing due to the wetlands. And I have a, a concept plan that Mr. Taylor has prepared. You'll see the area here that he has identified as wetlands, the area here, and of course, Bear Branch runs through the middle of the property. So they're losing a significant amount of the property to those wetlands, and so they're just trying to recoup some of the density that they're losing to those wetlands. Based on the concept plan, the overall density is 1.56 dwelling units per acre, because they're losing so much of it to that, to those wetlands areas. The, the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends suburban residential uses for this, for the subject property, which is 2 to 3.54 dwelling units per acre, and it recommends RS 10, 12, and 15 as appropriate zoning classifications, but it does say that, that it is acceptable to have smaller lots if those smaller lots are clustered around common open space. So in this case, there has some been discussion, there has been some discussion at the Planning Commission level about the developer's willingness to dedicate the wetlands to the city for a possible public park. At that point, at this point, that is unknown, if that'll be some type of city park facility, or if it will be a common area that would belong to the subdivision Homeowners Association. But at any rate, the density that could be achieved with the...
But at any rate, the density that could be achieved with the RS-6 zoning classification with the existence of the wetlands is actually lower than, than what our, than what our 2035 comprehensive plan recommends. So, the request is in keeping with the 2035 comprehensive plan. We did have some participation at the Planning Commission level when we conducted our public hearing, but the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the, of the rezoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC is here representing Camp Properties. If you have any questions for him.
Are you going to get up and talk about Candy Crush, Mr. Taylor?
I will not tell you what level I am on, but I would like to talk about my project for just a second. As Mr. Blomley said, he did a good job describing the process. We went through around this time last year, and as we started to develop construction plans and get our environmental done, we found significantly more wetlands than what we thought. We knew we were going to have some wetlands along Bear Branch, based on the city's previous study out there. We had anticipated them being more linear in nature. These are very obtrusive into the property, about two and a half acres of wetlands that come up into the property. So we started looking at alternative layouts, which Mr. Blomley showed you there. With that, we're able to basically maintain the same amount of density as what we had previously, but we are setting aside about half the total property in open space. We have had several conversations with City Engineering Department, as well as Parks and Rec, about the possibility of donating this. I actually had a meeting on, I think it was Tuesday of last week, if I remember correctly, and both parties would like the property. It's just a matter of where we draw the line, whether they want our private stormwater or just these areas. We have also talked with the Valley Brook Developer, which is to the northwest of this property, about the possibility of either easement or land donation with that so we can get a greenway system or pedestrian system all the way from Osborne over to Compton that would be associated with this. We did hold a neighborhood meeting in late August. We had about 10 participants, we'd invited, we'd sent out about 90 letters for that. Coming out of that meeting, we did make several revisions to the concept plan that Mr. Blomley shared here. We moved our lots that we've proposed away from the existing homes, created green space between the existing lots and our lots. We, there was a house along Mary Beth Court, or along Esquire, sorry. There was an existing fence over on our property. The lady that owned that had been pretty much maintaining and using that as her land. So we agreed basically to just donate about five feet of property to her so she could continue using it that way, even after our development. And then, we had kind of an oddball lot that was just stuck across the street from her house. We agreed to eliminate that, so she would still have the green in front of her. So, outside of that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you've got about the request.
You said it's a similar number of units. What, what, what was the number and what's now the number?
So, before, with the RS-10, we, our layout, we had 28 lots. With the RS-6, we achieved 32 lots. So we gained a few, but that is not what drove the request, it was the wetlands. With this, of course, with the RS-6, something they didn't have before, we're guaranteeing the quality materials. The RS-6 makes us have at least 75% masonry all around all sides of the building. My clients anticipating 1,600 square foot, it's 2,600 square foot home, so about 2,200 square foot even, in that median range there. Which is, depending on which side of the property you're on, to the east of here, most of those homes are probably smaller than that, are mostly vinyl. To the north, I would say the sizes are very comparable. Most of those are brick, we anticipate more of a craftsman style that's a, a stone water table with more hardier cement board on ours.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'd come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ49, rezoning area along Esquire Drive in Mary Beth Court to Single Family Residential 6 RS-6 District and Single Family Residential 12 RS-12 District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17-RPH50 adopted by the City Council on September 28, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider one, adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of approximately 26.5 acres and two, zoning of approximately 26.5 acres along Vills Road to Single Family Residential 10 RS-10 District, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Randy Friesman applicant, 2017-511 and 2017-430. Notice that said public hearing was published in October 16, 2017, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This request was considered at the September 6 Planning Commission meeting. Public hearing was conducted. Planning Commission recommended approval of the annexation in the plan of services. Properties located in the north side of Vills Road, just to the south of the Crestview subdivision, which is located in the city limits. So it's within the city's urban growth boundary, and it's contiguous with the existing city limits. The right-of-way in front of the subject property is included with the, with the request. There are a couple of unique twists and turns that, that Mr. Tindall and I have, have, have gotten familiar with over the last, over the last couple of months of working with Mr. Friesman on this annexation. Currently, the nearest, nearest water line to serve the subject property from the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is all the way over on Bradyville Pike, approximately 1,300 feet from the, from the requested area. That may make it cost prohibitive to serve any proposed development on this lot. So what Mr. Friesman is having to do is to acquire a water line easement from this water line here at the end of Lenkoya Drive, down the hall property next door, and over to his property. He's in the process of acquiring that right now. The owners are reviewing the, the easement agreement, and Mr. Friesman feels confident that, that he will be able to, to obtain that easement. However, the, so, staff does not recommend against approving this tonight because we do have the safety net of second reading on the zoning. If you choose to approve the zoning on first reading tonight, we can withhold the second reading until such time as that easement is recorded, which will assure us the ability to provide water service to the requested area. Another thing is sewer is not available to serve the requested area, so Mr. Friesman is requesting the ability to do the second step system on the Murfreesboro Water, Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. I need to make sure that I use the, the correct new name. The second step system for the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. Water Resources Board reviewed a request to allow a minimum of 63 lots. There's a threshold for a number of lots that makes it financially feasible for the city to operate a step, step system, and that number's around 60 to 65. Originally, the Water Resources Board set this particular development at 65. They bumped that down to 63 because after some more detailed engineering, Mr. Friesman's plan shows 63 lots. So the Water Resources Board approved that adjustment. The other thing that would have to be done, in addition to the water line easement before second reading, is a pre-annexation agreement signed by the developer, Mr. Friesman, that, that there would be funding in place for the city to maintain the step system if for some reason he does not move forward with the development of the entire subdivision. So in other words, the Water Resources Board has determined that the minimum number of lots on this property that can support a step system is 63 lots. We want assurance from Mr. Friesman that, that in the event that we don't get to 63 lots, that we will have a system that the Water Resources Department can operate from a financial standpoint. So, we, staff does not recommend deferring this tonight unless the, unless the City Council wishes to do so. We are fine with the City Council approving this tonight because we do have that safety net of, of second reading of the rezoning. The annexation does not go into effect until the zoning goes into effect. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, this did receive a favorable recommendation by the Planning Commission on September the 6th.
Okay. Council, do you guys, y'all have a preference on? All right, we need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for, for an annexation of approximately 26.5 acres. This would just be for the plan of services. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the plan of services, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Consider for adoption Resolution 17-RPS50 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 26.5 acres along Vills Road for Randy Friesman applicant, 2017-511.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 17RA50 to annex approximately 26.5 acres along Vills Road and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Randy Friesman is the applicant. So this is the resolution for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have to have a second public hearing for?
Well, the, the original public hearing was for the annexation and the plan of services.
Okay.
I think you just said it was for the plan of services, though.
I apologize. Just, yeah, so, let's, let's conduct a public hearing for the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We now have a motion on the table for the annexation.
And a second?
Second.
All right, go call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 26.5 acres along Vills Road as Single Family Residential 10 RS-10 District simultaneous with annexation. Randy Friesman is the applicant, 2017-430. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Same property we just considered for annexation, located along the north side of Vills Road. Mr. Friesman is requesting a zoning request, zoning classification of RS-10 simultaneous with annexation. That's single-family residential lots, a minimum of 10,000 square feet. This property will be significantly impacted by the, by the step fields for the step system and will limit the number of lots that he can get on the property. As I mentioned, his engineers have put that number at 63 is the number of lots that they are proposing for this property. The RS-10 zoning district is consistent with the city zoning to the north. That's the Crestview subdivision, which is also zoned RS-10. In addition, the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends that the property develop as suburban residential, which is the density of 2 to 3.54 dwelling units per acre, and it actually specifically lists RS-10, RS-12, and RS-15 as appropriate zoning classifications. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on September the 6th and recommends the approval of this request, recommended that unanimously. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Friesman is in the audience, as is Mr. Clyde Roundtree from Huddleston Steel, representing him.
All right, Ms. Blomley. All right, we'll need to open the public hearing for this, this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ50, the zoning area located along Vills Road is a Single Family Residential 10 RS-10 District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17-RPH51 adopted by the City Council on September 28, 2017, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 14.9 acres along Burrows Avenue from Single Family Residential 12 RS-12 District to Single Family Residential RS-6 District. Lennar Homes applicant, 2017-427. Notice that said public hearing was published in October 16, 2015, 6 to 17, issue of a local newspaper.
Good evening, I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. Lennar Homes wishes to rezone a 14.9 acre portion of the Blackman Meadows subdivision from RS-12 to RS-6. The subject property is located between the existing northern terminus of Burrows Avenue and Interstate 840. The property is currently undeveloped and was previously designated as Sections 5, 6, and 7 of Blackman Meadows. The existing residential lots in Blackman Meadows, which are located south and east of the subject property, range in size from 12,000 square feet to just over 16,000 square feet. The RS-6 zoning, if approved, would allow for single-family detached residential lots of 6,000 square feet, roughly half the size of the typical existing Blackman Meadows lot. Growth density could reach 7.25 dwelling units per acre for 108 total dwelling units. Murfreesboro 2035 shows this area as appropriate for suburban residential, which would allow density of up to 3.54 units per acre.
Yes, yes, yes.
As with several other properties on the land use map, the 2035 density recommendation, in this case, appears to be reflective of the existing or currently approved development. Ultimately, of course, the council can determine whether the request for increased density is appropriate. Adjacent zoning and land uses include vacant CF-zoned property on the west, a seven-acre single-family lot with RS-15 zoning on the north, the unbuilt Mattington Park PRD on the northeast, and existing sections of the Blackman Meadows subdivision zoned RS-12 on the east and south. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in August and voted unanimously to send this request forward to you with a favorable recommendation. I do also want to note that prior to our meeting tonight, we did distribute a letter from the Oakton Neighborhood Board of Directors, offering their support for this project. Matt Taylor from SEC is here representing the applicant and can discuss the request in more detail. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Donald. Again, Matt Taylor from SEC. As Donald said, we did have made this request to go to the RS-6 with our neighbors. We started this process by holding a neighborhood meeting back in early July. We had a good participation. I think there's about 40 homes inside of Blackman Meadows in Oakton currently. We had about between 30 and 40 participants present that night. And, actually, it was my first time, I think, being videoed and put on Facebook Live at that meeting. So that was a new experience. This request, we made this to allow us to get the advantage of the smaller setbacks on the side as well as overcome some obstacles we were finding with the floor air ratio and lock coverages with the homes that we're providing here. We explained to the residents at our neighborhood meeting the layout and the home sizes that we're going to build here between 2,200 and 3,300 square feet in size, along with the masonry requirements of the RS-6, and it was very well received by the homeowners. I think that's evidenced by the letter that you see here tonight. Unfortunately, Ms. Virginia could not be here tonight. She does a much better job presenting that letter than the words say. So if you did not get a chance to see her make that presentation at Planning Commission, you missed out. One of the few instances we were able to get neighbors to come out and speak in favor of our projects, which we appreciate very much. Since that meeting, we've had several follow-up meetings, emails, phone calls. We've even established an HOA advisory committee that involves ourselves, not myself, the applicant, as well as his consultant on the development side and the HOA to make sure that as we move forward and we hand this property over to their HOA, it's done in a manner that suits them. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you got now or after the hearing.
Hey, Matt, what kind of, what kind of assurances are there for these? I, I read the letter, and, you know, one of the things is the homes will be purchased by individual families and not be sold outright to a rental company. Will that be somehow in perpetuity? Or is that just for the original sale from, I guess, Lennar to?
So, yes, there, there had been an issue inside of Blackman Meadows in Oakton, if I understand correctly, of those homes being built and sold to a rental company, just what they do. And that's not the model that Lennar Homes has. And we explained to the residents, we don't build rental, and in addition, with the price point, the square footage and the masonry requirements of our homes, that economic model stops to work with the homes that we're proposing to build versus what's out there right now.
So, so that was the other question that I had was, so first of all, you guys have agreed to that, to tell them, we're not going to sell. agreed to that, to tell them, we're not going to sell it to a rental, a real estate or a rental company, whatever.
Yes, sir.
But, of course, they understand that once someone buys the home, then they could turn around and sell it to a rental company.
Yes.
Right? So on the square footage piece?
Yes, sir.
You indicated it would be 2,200 to 3,200 square feet. What assurances do we have with that without being a planned development? What, you know, the economic model changes, could you end up putting 1,400 square foot homes there?
We could, but our economics don't work at that point. So with Lennar being the developer and the builder, they know what size home they have to get there. They know the price that they've gotten, the land, and what it's going to cost to develop each lot, and so therefore dictates what size home they have to build. That will also be in our restrictions that gets recorded before our plat essentially gets laid down. And we've, during that meeting, we talked to the homeowners about making sure that they see the plat and they see those restrictions even before they get recorded as well, to hold us accountable.
Does Lennar own it now as what it's currently zoned?
Yes, sir.
So they bought it.
And we're actually developing what is, this was originally going to be section 5, 6, and 7. The previous developer chose to move forward with section 8 and 9 more quickly, and so got those plans approved and permitted. And so Lennar purchased not only this land, but a couple of cul-de-sacs to the south, which I think has about 30 lots total there. And they're actually actively constructing those right now.
So the homes are going to be comparable to what's in?
They will actually be larger and will have more masonry. Because the RS-6 requires the 75% masonry. If you drive out there, they're attractive homes, but they don't have 75% masonry all the way around.
I mean, you know, obviously, you look at it, and it's sandwiched right in between RS-15 and RS-12. And, you know, the people who bought it, bought it as RS-12, and they, you know, they're the ones that are, you're saying, are?
That's exactly why we, we've been, we, me and SEC, had been here a couple of times when we were looking to change existing neighborhoods and heard the council say, we've got to get these neighbors on board. And so that's why we started there, even before we made an application to Planning Commission. And that's why we pushed, that's why we pushed so hard to get them on board.
Yeah, I think, you know, we got to be careful that now that we've done this RS-6 thing, that we don't get every piece of RS-12 come in and end up being RS-6, you know, from here forward. And I do appreciate that.
Mr. LaLance, one addendum to the map that we have before us. The property to the north, since this map was made, has actually been rezoned to commercial fringe. So that's this property here. We can pull up the screen.
Oh, yeah.
That property is no longer zoned RS-15. So just wanted to clarify the correct zoning on that.
I remember now. Thanks.
And one other point, even though the zoning allows us to go to RS-6, almost all of our lots are in that 7,500 to 8,000 square foot range. And we did that so that the floor area ratios and lot coverage requirements of RS-6 match up with our home sizes, basically.
All right.
Okay. We'll need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading order 17OZ-51 to rezonate area along Burrows Avenue to single-family residential 6, RS-6 district.
It's really too bad that the director of the Homeowners Association couldn't come again tonight because she did come before the Planning Commission and probably the most glowing review that I've ever heard from anybody that has come before the Planning Commission, saying how pleased they were with the negotiation that had took place between the developer and the neighbors who had attended that meeting. And so kudos to the idea of having these neighborhood meetings because it really has simplified the process as far as trying to make public hearings less?
Combative?
Yeah, combative's a good word. It, you know, it really has smoothed the process. And so with that comment, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission for outside-the-city sewer service for approximately 2.9 acres located along Epps Mill Road.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Get my exhibit pulled up here. We're looking at the orange property on the map before you. It's 2.9 acres. It's north of Epps Mill Road, and it's adjacent to the Buchanan Estates subdivision, which is served and being developed as an outside-the-city sewer customer. The blue area was approved in 2016. It's about 41 acres. It's approved as an outside-the-city sewer customer. And the developer of that subdivision is acquiring the 2.9 acres in orange as a part of the same subdivision that he's looking to call Valley Farms. And so the Planning Commission is recommending approval as an outside-the-city sewer customer for this 2.9 acres, consistent with the previous approvals for the adjacent Buchanan Estates subdivision, as well as the property in blue to the west. You know, of course, when someone requests outside-the-city sewer customer service, they have to submit an annexation petition. And to show you how unfeasible the annexation of this property is, here's the request all the way down here, nearest city limits, all the way up here. So that's about two and a half miles. So planning staff and the Planning Commission are recommending the City Council approve this 2.9 acres as an outside-the-city sewer customer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director regarding acceptance of a gift of Farmer Lake to the city. Ms. Rives, you're not the Parks and Recreation Director.
I am not the Parks and Recreation Director. You may have guessed, but I am going to substitute it for her tonight. Apparently, this, the map did not get put in the agenda packet. Not sure what happened with that. I will try to explain it, and hopefully you all will be able to follow me. This involves Farmer Lake. Farmer Lake is a body of water from the dammed-up portion of the west fork of the Stones River. The dam is essentially under State Route 99, just a ways to the south of Warrior Drive, a little bit before you get to World Outreach Church. That dam was placed there 30, 40, 50 years ago, maybe more, for creating a farm pond. It remains there today. Mark Pertle owns the tract of land of total, along with the water total of a little over 40 acres that he's in the process of developing. There is now a gas station, C store at the corner of Warrior Drive and 99. That's been open for maybe a year, maybe more. The remainder of the parcel is under development. There's going to be a fairly good-sized multifamily development in the middle part of the property, which is, faces Warrior Drive. As a part of his whole development, Mr. Pertle is, has proposed to donate his portion of Farmer Lake to the city. The city already owns the westernmost portion of Farmer Lake, which was acquired when we acquired property for the Greenway Trail that now exists along the west side of Farmer Lake. So if, with this donation, we would control the most of Farmer Lake. There is still a portion of it on the, I guess, the southeastly side that is actually owned by the single-family estate lots that are off of Warrior Drive. But it would give us access to and control of the lake. In addition, he's going to give us a conservation easement. There is an old stone wall, probably an old slave wall with the remnants of it. It needs some repair. It is immediately to the east of the shoreline that Mr. Pertle will be donating. The conservation easement to the city will allow us then to have some people down there to hopefully restore that stone wall and to maintain it then as part of the trail amenity. And finally, along with the construction of these apartments, Mr. Pertle will build the trail for, on the city's property, that'll be essentially a Greenway Trail. This one will be a short one, but it will provide for some future connectivity and also will be an amenity for the apartments. We feel this is very much a win-win situation. It'll certainly give the apartment dwellers and the businesses up along New Salem an amenity, but it will also allow us to protect the lake, protect the shore of the lake, and provide access. Now, along with the lake, Mr. Pertle is going to donate a 50-foot-wide access point to the city. It will be run from Warrior Drive to the west so that it will connect to the lake, and that will allow a future development of a, of a ramp, a ramp for canoes and kayaks and small boats. It will not allow for motorized boat traffic. Currently, Farmer Lake is utilized by a number of people fairly casually for fishing. They pull off of Warrior Drive and pull down into the bank area where they, then access to lake to fish. That access is going away as Mark constructs his development. The new access that will be available for, off of Warrior Drive, will allow people to continue to utilize that lake for fishing. This is consistent with our 2035 Plan. The Chapter 6 in Parks Recreation Open Space recommends attaining, obtaining and preserving open space when possible. This is one that will preserve the open water for recreation and for continued use by Parks and Recreation Department. It can be incorporated into the future Blue Way system because this will be a lake access. We are hopeful that when, with the reconstruction of Salem Pike of 99, that we'll be able to provide a reasonable and a safe portage around the dam so that one could put in here at Farmer Lake and portage the dam and continue on downstream to Sportsman's Club Dam and even past that. They, this also eventually will be able to connect by a sidewalk, connect the trail to the new sidewalk over, that's part of the Salem Highway Bridge, and connect to the Greenway on the west side of the lake. There's no fiscal impact at this point. It will be managed by Parks and Rec, as part of their system. They anticipate a, some effort towards master planning in the future. There's nothing budgeted for it at this time, so any future costs will be part of future budgeting processes. The Greenway Committee unanimously recommended acceptance of this gift sometime back, as did Parks and Recreation Commission and Planning Commission recommended it also at its October meeting. So we ask council to accept Mr. Pertle's offer and let us proceed with the transaction and obtaining and recording the deeds and easement so that we can complete this transaction. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Rives? We have a motion to accept this. So.
Second.
First and second. Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Murfreesboro City Schools Assistant Superintendent for Administrative and Support Services.
Mayor, tonight, the city schools are asking to purchase new bleachers for John Pittard and Skels Elementary Schools. They'd like to get these installed after basketball season ends. They are requesting to piggyback off of a bid already out there from the Kentucky Educational Development Corporation as a purchasing cooperative. They have talked to Metro Nashville, who've already purchased bleachers from this provider, and they are satisfied with what was done for them. So they are requesting two approvals tonight. One is to approve Resolution 17R-27 to adopt the Kentucky Educational Development Corporation as a purchasing cooperative. And then, secondly, to purchase the bleachers, which also includes removal of current bleachers from Toadvine Enterprises for John Pittard and Skels Elementary. The funds would come from the County Shared Bond Funds, which is already on hand.
Do we need two motions?
It'd be two motions, yes, ma'am.
We have Resolution 17R-27 in front of you.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have Contract 3413 PV TS 2015R-1 in front of you.
Is there anybody here that's representing the schools on this? I'm just curious just why we're doing John Pittard and Skels when Mitchell Nelson's bleachers look like they do. I mean, as far as the age and stuff of them, I mean, it's.
I can't answer that. I do know, I've talked to some of the representatives while they were preparing this for council approval, and I think part of it is the amount of people they're trying to get into the gym area.
Maybe they have more space to accommodate larger bleachers.
It could be.
That would make sense if that's the case.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Crumley, we have approve of purchase of law enforcement Winchester ammunition, and then awarding a bid for uniform clothing and equipment, and approve use of two full-service car wash locations.
Mayor, I really believe all three of these were intended to be on your consent agenda. I look at police's memo, and it's clearly marked consent agenda, and somehow we've got it on the regular agenda. All three of these are budgeted items in the current year's budget. Annual purchase of ammunition, uniforms to the tune of a little over $39,000, and the approval of two different car washes at two different locations in town for vehicle cleaning and maintenance. Again, all three of these are budgeted items and are within budget lines.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
Second.
First and second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have no board and commission appointments. We have any statements that need to be paid. No statements that need to be paid. Other business, Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor, counsel, as requested, I did provide you a comprehensive report today on the first Methodist Franklin synergy proposals, which included the council rankings and some information about next steps. I had transmitted that to you earlier today, and I guess I wanted to get some direction from the council about how you want to proceed from here.
Everybody be, how do you have?
I was just gonna say, you know, when I sent that, my top two, what I also sent in was sort of kind of my top four things I'd like to see included. You know, how some of them, they all kind of had three or four pieces to their puzzle, and kind of one of the issues that I had was, you know, one might have one thing and another might have another thing that we might need to take away. And so in order to get an apples-to-apples comparison, I mean, can, is it possible for us to kind of?
In a second.
Motion second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Crumley, we have approved a purchase of law enforcement Winchester ammunition, and then awarding a bid for uniform clothing and equipment, and approved use of two full-service car wash locations.
Mayor, I really believe all three of these were intended to be on your consent agenda. I look at police's memo, and it's clearly marked consent agenda, and somehow, we've got it on the regular agenda. All three of these are budgeted items in the current year's budget. Annual purchase of ammunition, uniforms to the tune of a little over $39,000, and the approval of two different car washes at two different locations in town for vehicle cleaning and maintenance. Again, all three of these are budgeted items and are within budget lines.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second for these three items.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.
There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC. Everything is in order. If you approve this tonight, we would be able to issue this permit tomorrow.
I move for approval.
In a second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 13 has been removed. You have some beer permits in front of you. There is one permit tonight for a new catering permit for BL Restaurant Operations LLC.